Okay, let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember David Fowler.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our 27 September 17, 2019, county regular council meeting. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the September 17 minutes were provided in your meeting packets and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to review them? Are there any questions or changes?
Sure.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution accepting...
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the minutes from the September 17, 2019 city council regular meeting.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a proclamation recognizing October 6 through the 12 as Utility Week for the City of Fort Morgan. An appreciation of the City of Fort Morgan Utilities. Whereas we, the citizens of Fort Morgan, place high value on local control over utility services and therefore have chosen to operate community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit utilities and as consumers and owners of our utilities have a direct say in utility operation and policies. And whereas the City of Fort Morgan Utilities provide our homes, businesses, social services, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electric, gas, water, and wastewater services, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. Whereas the City of Fort Morgan Utilities are valuable community assets that contribute substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the City of Fort Morgan is dependable and trustworthy institution whose local utility operations provide many consumers protections and continues to make our community a better place in which to work and live. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Fort Morgan will continue to work to bring the lowest-cost, safe, and reliable utilities to community homes and businesses just as it has since 1906, the year when the first utility was recreated to serve all citizens of Fort Morgan. And be it further resolved that the week of October 6 through the 12 be designated as Utility Week in order to honor City of Fort Morgan Utilities for its contribution to the community and to make other consumer owners, consumers, owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of its contribution to the well-being. Therefore, I Ronald Schaver, Mayor of the City of Fort Morgan, do proclaim the week of October 6 through the 12, 2019, as the City of Fort Morgan Utility Week. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Fort Morgan, Colorado, to be affixed this, the first day of October, 2019. Mr. Nation, are you the recipient of this?
I... I appreciate that. We take a lot of pride in the fact that we are our own municipal utilities here in the City of Fort Morgan, and every opportunity we have to celebrate that, I think is a good day. Next week, we like to fall in line with the National Observance of Public Utility Week. And so this time, I'd like to invite all of you and all of our citizens that are watching on TV, we will be having our annual barbecue down at the electric shops a week from tomorrow, on Wednesday. And so come on down and you can meet a lot of our utility staff and see some demonstrations on some of the different things that we do, some of the different safety issues we have in our systems, and have a free lunch on us. But thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work you guys do. Okay, next is recognition of Business of the Month. Ms. Graffley.
Hi, good evening. So for the month of October, I'd like to recognize a business that continues to expand and grow in our community. They've recently relocated to our historical downtown and have been in business for over three years now. Their decision to move was not only because of the potential clients and sales that they could make, but also because of the welcoming business community that we have found in our main street. So I'd like to congratulate Anthony's Barber Shop on 304 Main Street as October's Business of the Month. Here to receive the award is Anthony Vazquez.
For a month, anyway.
For the month.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to allow a...
Your Honor, excuse me, you skipped, what's now number six, the liquor licensing authority?
Oh, I sure did. I apologize emphatically.
No problem.
Next on the agenda, before the public hearing, is a presentation of possible action on an application for renewal of a hotel/restaurant liquor license for El Jaqueal at 105 8th Avenue with estate violation. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, most routine annual renewals of liquor licenses are approved administratively and through my office as long as checks by the police department and things go okay. And they're only brought to the council in cases of violations of the liquor licensing laws. In this case, the applicant was visited during a compliance check by the State Liquor Enforcement Division in February of this year and found to have served an 18-year-old undercover purchaser an alcohol beverage and failed to check ID. When something like that happens, the licensee meets with the Liquor Enforcement Division and reaches an agreement how to take care of that offense. In the stipulation agreement and order they reached with the LED, this El Jaqueal agreed to a 10-day suspension with five days held in abeyance and a fine of $200 paid in lieu of the other five days of active suspension. There's only one other violation in this licensee's file, that's from 2014, so five years ago, for the same offense. The manager of the establishment has attended tonight to answer any questions you may have. And so what we're looking for is for you to decide in the best interests of the city whether to approve the application for renewal of the hotel and restaurant liquor license for El Jaqueal Corp., DBA El Jaqueal Mexican Grill at 105 E. 8th Avenue.
Okay. So everybody has reviewed, this is the second violation, first one was five years ago?
Right.
Under the same current, same management, or is it changed management?
No, same.
Same management? Okay.
Can we have the applicant?
I will call him up, yes. You want them to sign in? Mr. Brennan?
No, they're part of the here.
Very, okay.
Agenda item, so that's fine.
Okay, you're up for renewal, and you've had two violations, the second one being current, but there was a five-year span in there. What precautions have you taken or implemented to ensure that these don't continue happening or you don't have a relapse of an additional violation?
She's going to help me with English.
Okay, that's fine.
So we've been making meetings every once in a while and then been talking about it, like double-checking IDs, like being careful and just making sure it doesn't happen again. So we do talk to the new people that we hire and then the old ones that have been there, we do talk to them over and over again just to make sure.
Have you done any training regarding verification? I know that the police department and then there is training available for businesses that can have a liquor license for employees that they can do. Have you utilized any of those?
No, we haven't yet, but we'll look into that.
Okay. Can you get them some of that information, Mr. Brennan?
Not recently. We haven't had one of those for several years out here.
Okay, so they're not...
But we can, yeah, we can provide them with some information.
Because I believe there's, from the last time, I believe there must be some online, I believe there's online training that's available for you to have your employees go through. As the mayor alluded to, do you have, I mean, do you guys have policies in place for, I mean, a lot of businesses will say that anybody that looks like they're under the age of 50, our policy is, we card everybody. So you offend 90% of the people, but you don't serve anybody. Is that, what is your guys' policy on that?
Well, we like double-check because we do have underage staff, so we have to, they have to go to the bar and ask another person to go take it for them, so then we double-check that.
Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant?
And the offense, back five years ago, that was for the same thing, underage?
Yes.
It wasn't for over-serving or anything?
No.
If there's no other questions, I would entertain a resolution for acceptance or denial of their current license.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the, sorry, I lost my place, accepting the renewal of the hotel and restaurant liquor licensing for El Jaqueal at 105 8th Avenue with estate violation.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
I would look into the online training and see if you can get some of that for the future. Okay? Thank you.
Or reach out to some of the other businesses that have liquor licenses and ask them what they're doing too. I mean, I know there's several, you said, we're more than happy to help you.
Because we just want to see you at the restaurant, we don't want to see you here, so.
Okay, back on track. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to allow a childcare center in an R1 zoning at 300 Sherman Street. This is a public hearing, keep public comment to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations as I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. Has it been legally noticed, Mr. Brennan?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on September 13.
Presentation of the application, Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, what you have in your packet tonight is case number 19-016SU. This is for a special use permit for a childcare center or to operate a childcare center at 300 Sherman Street. This is Sherman School. It's zoned R1, that's why the special use before you tonight, childcare facilities are only allowed in the R1 by special use permit. We did take this case to the Planning Commission on September the 23rd. There were no comments at the meeting other than from the applicant. The applicants are here tonight, if you have questions for them after my presentation. Planning Commission did hear the case unanimously, recommended approval of the case to you all. The school district's been operating a few childcare centers throughout the district. They'd like to consolidate all of those to Sherman in the building that was just recently built and constructed for the Head Start program. The Head Start program didn't work out for them for various reasons, but they'd like to utilize that space and consolidate these programs they have. They've got the Children's Center, which is the district's after-school daycare program, and that's currently at Columbine Elementary School. Then they also have the Teen Parents Center, which provides infant and toddler care and parenting instruction to high school teen parents, and also provides daycare services for district teachers. So they'd like to move that to Sherman School as well. I think that's a great fit for that building. They've got a nice facility they just built. I think it's a perfect opportunity to consolidate into one location for them. Staff certainly supports the application. We've, you know, met with the applicant and discussed that. They've provided a very nice narrative in your packet that outlines how they meet the criteria for a special use permit. We agree. We've received no comments to my office for or against on this case since it's been to Planning Commission. So with that, staff would recommend approval of this case 19-016SU. With the one condition, that it would run with the land in perpetuity until such time as the operation would cease. And the only reason we'd ask that is if they decided to do something different that may require a different special use permit or other requirements, that we'd have the opportunity to relook at that. But I think for this instance, so long as they continue to operate it as a daycare center, we don't have any issue, so. Questions from me on this case?
So is the reason this came, so the Sherman Early Childhood Center used to be at Sherman?
Yeah.
Then it moved to Columbine? My kids weren't there by that time. It moved to wherever it is currently. So is the reason that this is back in front of us is because that was by special use and it ran?
Yeah, I couldn't answer that necessarily, but I do know that the state has new requirements on the school district, that they get a letter from the city that this is allowed by zoning. So it's quite possible that things occurred, they were legal at the time, and then we've changed our code, and then they became legally non-conforming, or they may have been operating, we didn't know about them, and they weren't conforming. It's hard to say what happened in the past, but at this point, for me to write a letter, we've got to go through the process for sure to say, yes, it's legal by special use through our code. So I'm not really sure how things progressed in the past, I just know that at this point, yeah, in order to do this, you'd need a special use permit.
So with that caveat about until operation would cease, so if at some future date, they decide to move this to somewhere else?
Yeah.
And then wanted to bring it back at a later date, so that would be where it would stop? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, I think what we would want to do is just relook at any use that goes back into that location, if it would require a new special use permit. If they moved it to another location, most likely, I think all of, just about all the schools are either in the R1, R2, they're not in a location that would allow a childcare center as a use by right. So we're probably going to see this as a special use permit, no matter which school they might move it to, particularly if the state's going to continue to require a letter from us that it, you know, meets the proper zoning requirements. So, you know, I don't envision any issues. I think they intend to operate this, at this location, for a very long time, and so I don't think we'll have any concerns with that, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Glamire?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any.
Thank you, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to make our pitch, I guess, so to speak. My name is Mike Lee, I'm the CFO of the school district, and also is Dr. James Hammack, he's our superintendent of schools for our V3 school district, and then Deborah Lee, who is our principal of Sherman Early Childhood Center where this facility will be located and relocated. Mr. Glamire mentioned, this is actually kind of a technical correction issue to address the consolidation of a couple of different licenses that we have, existingly have, for the after-school daycare program that has been housed at Sherman, and the Teen Parents Center, which has been housed at the high school, which we're both moving those to the Sherman Early Childhood Center. And so we're consolidating those into one license, and as Mr. Glamire mentioned, since we're now consolidating, that's a new license application with the state, and they now have a requirement in their licensing process to get a zoning approval letter from the city and discovery. We've probably been in violation for decades with our after-school daycare and our child care facilities in our other schools. And ironically, the after-school daycare program and the Teen Parents Center were originally both at Sherman, and we've relocated those just from logistical space issues. And with the new addition of our Head Start wing, and Mr. Glamire mentioned, definitely forces beyond our control, the federal government gave us the $2.6 million grant award to build a new facility, and then they decided they were going to transfer operation of that to another entity, which didn't make a whole lot of sense, but out of our control, and then the other entity just changed their mind, didn't want to do it, so then it was back into our hands, but we had already moved on to make utilization of the facilities, and that's where the daycare, moving to Sherman and the Teen Parents Center, which frees up our space requirements we had at Columbine because of the expansion of our dual immersion program at Columbine, which has really become a very popular program in the district. And the high school is just bulging at the seams, and so moving the Teen Parents Center has freed up two additional classrooms for us at the high school to help alleviate some of their overcrowding. And if you haven't been to the new wing addition at Sherman, it's a really nice facility. It's a metal structure on top of the traditional brick facility, but it blends very nicely. Of course, we think so, we built it. But that makes Sherman Early Childhood Center a 100% young child facility, and we've got now from toddlers clear up to the age six, from the kindergarten to five, turn to six, and then some of our after-school daycare program, which was the original of one of our principals, Claire Leefart for the Latchkey Kids, so they had supervised after-school daycare program, and we're going to continue with that. New facilities going up in our playground areas, and it's just, it's a really nice facility. We just want to be compliant, obviously, and to do that, we're going to need the special use to comply with the zoning requirements to add all of those programs from special ed preschool, the CPP Carl preschool program, the Teen Parents Center, which is the infants up to the toddlers, the after-school daycare program, and we added three-year-olds and four-year-olds to the programs to accommodate for the loss of some of the Head Start, and we're doing the three- and four-year-old program outside of Head Start effectively to make sure we could address those community and family needs the best we could. So it's a cool facility, and there's a lot going on there, and a lot of young kids, and it's actually one of our largest, next to the high school and middle school, it's our largest school. There's 400 and, 450 now, 470 kids in that whole combined facility. And the impact on the neighborhood, we think, would be zero. We've expanded the parking, expanded the parking lot spaces, it's the same housing. We had the modulars out back before, nice new facility. Security has substantially improved because the kids are all housed, secure inside our facility for our traditional district-wide school safety and security, so a nice improvement. We just want to get technically compliant with your zoning to match all of our operations at the Sherman Early Childhood Center.
Compliance is good.
We are your most compliant business in Fort Morgan.
Yes, you are. It's a pleasure working with you.
We comply 10 hours a day.
And you sleep the rest?
Yeah, 14 hours.
Well, the other ones were training to comply, so.
Any questions, or?
No, I think between you and Steve, that pretty much clears it up. And I think we're good neighbors to the community, we try and keep traffic to a minimum, and one thing just made me know, we've had traffic congestion on Sherman there at 3:00 in the afternoon, a discharge, and we just now, with the expansion of our parking lot on the north side, which goes to the east, we've opened up that driveway as you come into Sherman, so now parents can leave the kindergarten drop-off area, go down, which we call that the Head Start access. Now they can make a right turn on Beaver, I believe, that's the street. And so now they're not congesting as much on Sherman School, Sherman Street there, so that's been a nice improvement to the traffic flow, just because of that cutout of the two parking lots, so we're trying to help eliminate that, so citizens aren't impacted by 450 kids blasting out at 3:00. We'll put that on our agenda.
Well, and it is nice, too, with people being able to turn right there and go down to Linda, and once we have, you know, the rest of Beaver open up going out, so people can get out flat on Saunders, it's going to...
Only improve it.
It's going to make it so much, it's a little, for those of us that work right there at DHS, it's a little harder getting through there in the morning, but sure, it's still an improvement, it's still, you know, much needed and much appreciated improvement.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if you received any oral or written comments prior to this public hearing?
Not through my office, Your Honor.
Council discussion. Are there any questions from council or discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second. I have a motion by... I have a motion by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell, all in favors, aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same sign, motion carries. Counsel action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and counsel, you've heard the presentation by staff and the applicant, appropriate action is by resolution on the request for the special use permit.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution on case number 19-016-SU, a special use permit for a childcare center, as was recommended by the planning commission, with the following caveat, that this special use runs with the land in perpetuity until such time as the operation would cease.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Carry on in compliance.
Go forth and be compliant.
We endeavor to persevere.
Thanks, Mike. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 1237, an ordinance amending the zoning code regarding auto salvage business and kennels and catteries. Once again, this is a public hearing, and the same rules will apply as the previous public hearing. First is the issue of legal notice, Mr. Brennan.
Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times
Next is presentation on the ordinance, Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you. So we talked about this at the last meeting, this is a change to Chapter 20 of the Land Use Code regarding auto salvage businesses, kennels, catteries, rabbit trees, and corrals, and that is the one change that you have in the ordinance from what we talked about last time, was that we made sure we added rabbit trees and corrals into the language. That codifies what was in the other chapter that dealt with animals and kennels, catteries, rabbit trees, corrals. No changes to the ordinance, other than that, I've had no comments to my office for or against on the change, and so staff is recommending approval of ordinance number 1237 that would just codify that other chapter in the code. Be happy to answer any questions you might have for me on this one.
Get the rabbits.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Glamire? I think we got them all answered at the last one.
Yeah, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Next is public comments, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address this Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if you received any oral or written comments prior to the public hearing.
No, Your Honor.
Comments by counsel. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, no.
Second. Or a motion by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries, legal.
Mayor and counsel, you've heard the presentation on this proposed ordinance 1237, appropriate action is by resolution approving on second and final reading ordinance 1237.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the second and final reading of ordinance number 1237, amending the zoning code regarding auto salvage businesses, kennels, catteries, rabbit trees, and corrals, and authorization to publish by title only.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Doug Sashow, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is presentation on revised bids for electric department utility truck, Mr. Nation.
We're going to make this really short for you.
We're going to ask to go ahead and remove this from the agenda tonight. We went out to bid earlier this year, and they weren't able to deliver the model that we asked about. We checked with another dealer that did state bid, they thought they could, we just confirmed with them yesterday, and they're like, no, sorry, we're out of those. So we'll rebid it and come back to council, probably a 2020 model, so, sorry about that.
All in favor? That was quick. Next is presentation on bids for pond aerators at Riverside Park, Mr. Duke.
Good evening, everybody.
Aye.
This is for the purchase of three, three-quarter horsepower solar-powered pond aerators, it's kind of hard to say, which was approved in the 2019 Conservation Trust budget in the amount of $30,000. A little background on that, we, our three existing electric-powered pond aerators have had numerous problems over the last few years, to the point where they're currently not working, none of them are working. These aerators are extremely difficult and time-consuming to have repaired, therefore park staff decided to replace them with solar-powered aerators, which we hope will be a lot easier to maintain and keep going. We contacted three different companies that sell solar-powered aerators, Outdoor Water Solutions, which came in with a bid of $20,985, Solitude Lake Management, $26,700, and Absolute Aquatics, which did not bid. Therefore, we are requesting counsel approval to accept the bid from Outdoor Water Solutions in the amount of $20,985 for the three solar-powered pond aerators for use in Riverside Park. Any questions on that?
Will you get them in time to get them installed before?
We'll get them this year, but we probably won't install them. These solar-powered aerators, you remove in the wintertime when there's ice in the water. Our other aerators, we would leave in, but these, they recommend, are removed during the winter, so we'll just, we'll have them in time so where we can put them in in the spring.
Great.
Any other questions for Mr. Duke?
No.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve and accept the bid from Outdoor Water Solutions for $20,985 for three solar-powered pond aerators.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is presentation ratifying emergency expenditure for the Parks Department irrigation system, Mr. Hamer.
All right, Mr. Mayor, counsel, so we're here today asking for a resolution ratifying an emergency expenditure for Doak's department. A little background, in February of this year, Doak found out that their irrigation control system, just kind of an internet-based control system, where Doak can basically control all the parks' irrigation system from his computer, really from any computer as long as he can access the internet. He was informed in February that the company that we used was basically going bye-bye, and they would not be supporting the software anymore, as of, I think, June this year, it was going to go away. When we initially talked about this, Doak said, well, you know, we can deal with it, I'll drive around and control the clocks throughout the summer. I mentioned that to Jeff one day in one of our check-in meetings, explained to him the situation, Jeff felt like it was an emergency, went to the mayor, got approval to go ahead and research ordering a new system. We have now got the new system installed, we're still working on some kinks, new system costs $74,829, so we're here tonight to ratify that expenditure. Is that about right?
Yes.
Any questions?
One of the questions I had, is this the same or similar to the one we're currently utilizing at the golf course?
I think the golf course system's a Toro system, so it's a little different, but it's the same idea.
Were you able to vet the company before diving in, because I know, we don't want to run into that same problem where the company goes under and we have to do this again?
Yes, we don't, and the company, current company didn't actually go under, they sold out to another company who saw that as an opportunity to sell all new controllers to everybody who had the old brand.
Okay.
The new company is a reputable company, a lot of the, a lot of other municipalities in Colorado are going through the same thing, and Baseline is the new company we're going with, and they are being installed in a majority of the municipalities that had the old system, so it's, we're not the only one using this company, they seem, seem pretty, pretty based, pretty good.
So is Baseline the one that bought out the old one?
No, no, we...
Got to ask.
Yeah, we purposely did not want to go with that company.
I think that was their plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they found out they aren't getting a whole lot of the old signature.
Amazing how that works.
Yeah.
It seems like a much better plan than having you and your staff scrambling around from park to park, making sure the sprinklers are on that.
Yes, it's much easier to turn it off on Friday night at 11:00, when it starts raining real hard, to turn it off on my computer at my house than drive around town.
Nope, it's not raining here.
Actually, we were pretty fortunate, this last summer, we had a pretty dry summer, not dry, but we didn't have that situation come up too many times, so.
Is the cemetery on that system, too?
Yes, they are.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to ratify the emergency expenditure for the new Parks Department irrigation system.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is presentation approving an intergovernmental agreement with Morgan County Quality Water District related to the Jensen Onion property, Mr. Nation.
Good evening. This is kind of a unique circumstance, typically if a piece of property is not within our corporate boundaries, or hasn't been at any extent, they're to be served by Morgan County Quality Water District. This property that I refer to as Jensen Onion, I know there's some people that don't realize that it's the Jensen family that owns the facility down there, but this is the triangular piece of ground that's just west of the Burger King, that's snugged in between Riverview Avenue and the ditch down there. And here, earlier this year, they went through and subdivided that into three pieces so they could make an attempt to sell off pieces and parts of it. At that time, one of the people that was looking at buying a piece came in, talked to me, and said, we would like to look at putting city water on this, and I knew that it wasn't in the city, so I said, you need to go talk to Quality Water first, and I said, if they decide they don't want to serve it, then we can have a completely different conversation. And they left, came back a couple days later, and presented me with a letter that the city of Fort Morgan had supplied to the Jensen family, and some years ago, announced to me, we had agreed to service them water with two pre-sold water taps in exchange for an easement and some other stuff that had been done on the property. And so got into a conversation at that point to where we were kind of obligated via these letters that had been produced several decades ago. And luckily, when I got, had a conversation with Quality Water District, this is in a little piece of ground that they just really can't service all that well, not without some upgrades to their system, and so they were more than welcome to the idea of not having to serve it at all, so. So in order for us to do that, we feel it best to do this type of arrangement where we have an IGA in place, it spells it out, so everybody knows in the future, as we change, you know, councils, and we change employees, and Quality Water does the same, that this is what we all agreed to do. So they've created three lots, and this IGA just speaks to the two that are referenced in here, the 19975 and the 19820 County Road S. Those are the two that we had spoke to a couple of decades ago about pre-selling water taps to. The third piece actually has a well sitting on it that can be used for a water source, and so, so we left that one out of the IGA just because it technically does have a water source at this time. And so what you have tonight in front of you is just an agreement with Quality Water that spells out that those two addresses will be served by us. One of the addresses, if you're familiar with the corner down there, Paradigm, has put in, we did put in their water tap, and that's what they're using to do some of their work in their buildings, and all that nice landscaping that they're, that they put in as they're watering with our, with our water. So we're kind of already supplying them and everything, this will just put into place something that shows that both agencies are okay with what has transpired, so I would be happy to answer any questions.
Mike, this is just helping me learn generally, but, so why are, why is this an IGA with Quality Water instead of just an arrangement with the owner?
Because legally, because Quality Water is the taxing district, and they're receiving tax revenue to potentially serve them as a customer, and so we have to, and then we have an IGA with Quality Water District that speaks to how we handle all transactions between our two agencies when something like this comes up.
Okay.
And so it becomes an issue of them not being, or not serving them and us serving them, so.
So it just kind of covers Quality Water, so?
Yes, they know that we chose to serve it, and they didn't.
Okay, well, thank you for helping me learn.
We have other, not similar, different, but similar.
Yeah, the one that I know that I've brought to counsel before is we have an IGA that covers the Banner Clinic on Railroad Avenue. That is the last little enclave in there that's not in the city, and for functionality and reasons, we needed to abandon the Quality Water Tap that went basically under Sol Nociente, and so we now service them, and we have a very similar IGA that covers that property, so.
Okay.
Doesn't happen very often, but it does happen.
So there were two pre-sold water taps to that property?
Yep. So Paradigm controls the main building that's up against the ditch, and then they have the one, the onion shed that's closest to Riverview and closest to Burger King, and then the second lot, they, all they have on it is the second onion shed, and that's been used for drying of hemp, last year, that's what it was used for. They have not made any requests of us to put a water tap into that facility, they just need electricity, basically, to run their lights and, and open their doors and stuff on that shed, so they haven't made a request. But it's one of those that now that I know that exists, we try to keep a list of all the pre-sold water taps that we have, or water taps we're obligated to serve in the future, so.
Do we have a lot of those left?
Uh, I think last count, we're down to about 30, 30 or 32 like that that still float out there, so, yes and no, I mean, in the overall scheme of how many we have, no, but I mean, it's...
Still there.
They're still there, yeah.
So if you're out there and you have a letter, come and tell Brent.
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement with Morgan County Quality Water District related to the Jensen Onion property.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brent.
Thanks, Brent.
Next is a presentation on a resolution authorizing the sale of real property at Center Point Plaza, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor, this is just some housekeeping issues we have to take care of in the process of transferring the property to Kurt Sukup and his group. So as part of the closing requirements that have been required by his partners as well as his attorney, Nina has put together this exquisite resolution that covers all of the legal issues that were raised by opposing counsel, and with this, it will authorize the city, it demonstrates an authorization of the city council to sell that property to Mr. Sukup and his joint venture to build the... council to sell that property to Mr. Sukup and his joint venture to, to build the apartments. Actually met with him today, and we're working on moving some other things forward and getting some assurances on some other things so that we can hopefully get some improvements in on the property so they can build, start building very soon. So anyways, this is just one more step in the process to closing.
Is this the last document for signature?
Probably not.
For the transfer?
Probably not. I, I imagine when we get to closing, there'll be a whole lot more documents for the mayor to sign.
This is just leading up to closing.
Yes.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution authorizing the sale of real property at the Center Point Plaza property.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next is presentation on approval of the mayor's day off after Thanksgiving. Mr. Wells.
Thank you. We do this every year, kind of a standard thing that we do. We have gone out and done benefits evaluations comparing our benefits to other similarly situated organizations and communities, and we have discovered that we have one less day off than the normal group. And we, we found this out several years ago, but it's kind of become a tradition that we bring this about a month or so before Thanksgiving. And it's called the mayor's day off because that's, initially started, I think, in 2007 or 2008. It's been quite some time. And so it's kind of a fun tradition in the city. We come to city council, ask the city council to approve the mayor's day off, which is the day after Thanksgiving. And so we're doing that again this year for the benefit of the employees. Usually, we don't have very many people here on that day. They usually take a vacation day, or we don't, if they are here, they do very little. So anyways, not a lot of people showing up on Black Friday to pay their utility bills.
They're online shopping.
They're online shopping, exactly. So we, we would request that the council consider approving again this year the mayor's day off.
Okay, this is not the first time this has happened, so.
It's probably our most popular resolution of the year.
For employees.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the mayor's day off on the day after Thanksgiving.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
And the mayor will enjoy that day off. Next is 2020 budget calendar. Review of proposed overall 2020 budget.
Well, we made it to the end. Very exciting time for all of us here at the city, and hopefully city council feels the same way. We have spent several months putting together the proposed budget that's being presented today and is required to be presented this month by the next meeting by me, the city manager. What council requests is that we go through the budget, answer any questions, address any issues that may come up that you may have as we go through the budget tonight. I'm hoping to kind of go through, if you've got questions, after reviewing it, having it reviewed, and then I'll highlight a few things as well. One of the things I'll point out and want to thank Jeannie for is, at some point, the software that we normally use to put this together was no longer supported by Casell. And, and it did something really crazy where it took all the lines and shifted them a different direction and messed up the entire budget. And so that all happened at the end. So we wanted to get this to you a week earlier. However, Jeannie had to go through and realign all of the, make, and double check and make sure that everything lined up again. So Jeannie is very happy to have this thing done and has done a lot of work to, to get it to you in its format tonight. To start out, a couple of requests from council, I think the mayor, with regard to some of the things that we'll discuss tonight in relation to the budget are the requests for additional employees. Every department or several departments got up and requested additional assistance and help and employees in their departments. And when we get to the end of reviewing the budget, I kind of want to go over what we've done this year so far and then talk about what was requested during the different presentations and, and then tell you kind of what our plan is and, and get a little bit of direction from council on that. But with that, we'll go ahead and turn to the draft budget. A couple of things to note in this is that we have been able to balance nearly all of the funds, well, all of them are balanced, but there's different ways that we're balancing them. We'll want to go through and discuss that as we review the overall budget. And so the, the very first page, page one, that's where we begin with the general fund. That's all of the expected revenues for next year. And so if you look at the top section, that's taxes, what we expect to get through various sales tax, property tax, specific ownership tax, and so on, and our projected amounts. Were there any questions that you had or any additional explanation that you would like me to provide in that revenue section, which is page one, two, and three? So one of the things that I'll point out that we've been watching very closely also is the, on page three, fines. We've noticed the downward trend in, in the number of tickets issued, and that's having a direct impact on the number of fines, and we're trying to adjust that according to what's happening with the police department. Then we've got the mayor, on page five, we start the expenditures for the general fund. And if there are any questions anytime, please stop me. Something to point out that you'll see in some of these administrative types of positions, the city council serves not only as the city council for the general fund, but also the board of directors for the various enterprise funds that the city has, which includes the electric, gas, water, wastewater, and sanitation departments. With that, we have what's called, if you go to the very last line, it's called admin/support. And that is basically an offset of your duties as it relates to the various enterprise funds. So there is a payback that comes from the various enterprises into the general fund to offset the costs that you, that are associated with your functions in the, in that role. And you'll see that in various other departments that also provide services to the enterprise funds. So page six is the city manager's budget. Nothing changed since the presentation of that. In the finance, again, nothing was modified in the finance budget since it was last presented. Eight, page eight is the clerk's budget, and nothing adjusted since that was presented. The attorney's budget on page nine, quite a few things changed on that just because we now have outside counsel. And what we've done is we have eliminated all of the other expenses associated with the department, and we have put in engineering and consulting services in the amount of $195,000, and then offset that with the admin support. So that was one primary change from when we presented it before or were considering it. Airport on page 10, nothing has changed since that was presented. And then network is no longer, so if you switch over to page 12, we're at human resources. Nothing's changed since that presentation. In the general government, nothing has changed since the presentation of that. One thing that we were looking at and we're still working on some of the stuff, I have a meeting later this week, the mayor and some of the staff to go over stormwater and where we're at with that and getting a little more direction on that. But that potentially could modify this later on because we would be making an adjustment or a payment out of the general government fund into the stormwater fund, depending on how we structure that. Then if you switch over to page 14, we've got the police department. As far as I know, nothing has changed on that. And Paul is not feeling well tonight, so was not able to make it. Fire department, as far as I know, nothing has changed on that. Building inspections on page 17, nothing's changed on that. Though I did have an interesting conversation with Mike Kirkendall today about some additional unfunded mandates that have been pushed down on local governments and the inspection department specifically. There's a new requirement on November 1st that not only do we go out and do inspections, but now we also have to monitor the electricians and the plumbers that are doing the jobs and determine what licensers they have and provide that information, well, track that information to make sure that there's nobody on the job that doesn't have a license at some level doing the work. And I guess it was something that was pushed through the legislature by the electricians and plumbers unions to make sure that there are licensed individuals that are doing those jobs, which we do anyways. But now, in addition to going out and making sure that they're licensed with the city as a contractor and have the appropriate state licenser, we have to identify the actual individuals and line them up with paperwork that they now have to send to us. So there's some additional work that we're talking about and trying to figure out how to manage in that department moving forward. You've got the court budget. Nothing's really changed in that. And we've got economic development and marketing. Nothing's changed since that was presented. And we'll, we'll report that today, Fort Morgan got a lot of, a lot of really good accolades at the State Office of Economic Development International Trade. I don't know what you would call it. It was a presentation and pitch for, for the opportunity zones, and there were a whole lot of investors and developers and other people in the room. Kurt Sukup was there, and Sarah did a wonderful job in presenting to this group of about 200, between 200 and 300 people, Center Point, what we're doing out there, and had a lot of information that was shared with that group today. So things are moving forward in that department. Then we've got the streets department. Nothing has adjusted on that on page 20 since that was presented. We've got the recreation slash senior center. At this point, we think this will remain the same throughout the budget next year, but you'll recall that we are hoping to open a new senior center, and we're not sure exactly what all the costs may be associated once we get into there. But we believe that things should stay pretty much the same as was presented to you. Then we have on page, page 24, parks and cemetery, and nothing has changed since that was presented. We have the library museum, and nothing has changed in that budget since it was presented. Same with community services on page 27. On page 28, the golf, we have, nothing has changed since the presentation, but just want to let you know that we have increased the general maintenance. Remind you again that we've increased the general maintenance line from $10,000 to $30,000, and there's a specific list of things that we are working on and going to hopefully get fixed up for next year. And then on page 20, or on page 30, we've got the police miscellaneous, this is the police forfeiture fund and miscellaneous fund, just something that prints out with the, the overall budget. Nothing's changed since those were discussed. I'm trying to see. If you go back to page 29, you'll see that the bottom of that is the general fund overview. And so in 2020, our total revenue is expected to be $12,574,575, and our overall general fund expenditures will be $12,574,575. So we have balanced that budget with the revenues. Capital improvement on page 32, we have various revenue that comes into that. We've got the sales tax capital improvement, use tax capital improvement, street sales tax for strictly for streets, and then a line item for refunded sells and use tax. Sometimes we use that if we give incentives for those as a debit to our revenue lines. And then you also have, so that's our taxes, and we have our intergovernmental, which are made up of grants or federal funds that we receive or funds from the county where we have shared funding comes into the city from the county for streets. And then we have miscellaneous revenue on various things. And then we come down to the, the fund itself and what has been budgeted. We've got the $200,000, so this one's a little bit different to follow as you go to the right-hand column to 2020 and follow that down. We list things separately every year. So the first thing you can run across there is that $200,000 to crush concrete in the streets department. If you go to page 34 and scroll down, you've got $240,000 for the airport runway ceiling. A large portion of that will be covered by federal and state grants. We have $75,000 in there to demolish both fee big houses, and we're working on getting the final test back for that. Keep scrolling down, you'll see a, a big number there, the recreation field house. We've budgeted in the revenues $2 million for that number. And I'm happy to say that we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks working with our designers, and, and we are very, we are under that number right now in maintaining all of the different spaces. Yeah, Kevin was in the meeting when it was a little bit more than that, but now it's a lot less than what that one was. So we're very happy with RS and H and all the work that they've done, and Steve's done a really good job in pushing that along. Then we've got columbarium expansion, $100,000. We've got the airport FBO office remodel phase two, $20,000. Library museum remodel, electrical, to add more different kinds of computer services and other things into the building, that's $35,000. We've got the animal shelter roof replacement, $17,000. Police department roof repair, $18,000. Police department evidence room addition, $80,000. And then if you go onto page 35 and roll down there, you've got the fuel system at the airport, and you've got strictly for streets budgeted at $2,200,000. And then you have streets improvements. So the $2.2 million is just the strictly for streets money. I, I continue to hear from time to time that people believe we're taking that money and spending it on something else. It's not true. As you can see in our budget, we have it budgeted for strictly for streets, that amount. Then just under that, you'll have streets improvements, $900,000. That's what the council committed to give to that, to do strictly for streets, to continue to move the, the streets finishing forward. And I know we're going to try to do a couple of new types of finishes this year to see if we can find some more economical ways to stretch those dollars, get more out of them. And Steve's working really well with the county, actually, and we're going to partner on a, on a process where they're going to use it for a couple of miles in the county, and we're going to use it for a few streets in the city while they're out here and save some money in doing it together. So we're really working to stretch those dollars as far as we can. One of the things that we put in here, and it's going to be subject to finding, it will be subject to finding grant money or some other way to make it happen or something, but we've got the gateway subdivision roads. We're designing those this year. If you recall, there are several lots that are unbuildable because there aren't any streets in there. This is one of those areas where we have several taps, prepaid taps that we talked about before. So there's water, there's sewer, there's electric, and there's gas all in there, but there's no streets. there's no streets. So we have someone, Sharon Helms, who works at the Fort Morgan Housing Department. She, she has several people that she's pre-qualified for self-help homes. They want to start building them. We've had several of them built in the community. They look great. It's a great way for people to get into homes that may not have a down payment, put some sweat equity into it. And we just don't have any place to put it. And that would be the perfect spot because she can get the lots for a reasonable price and make it work. So we're trying to work with that. So that's what that three million dollars is for. And then we have new streets designs, ninety thousand. And I guess I could save you all a lot of time. This is the same stuff that we presented to you and it was follow-up from the February thing, the February retreat. But we've got cemetery, three-quarter ton pickup truck with plow, forty-five thousand. Pickup or parks chipper truck. It's always happy, very chipper that we're going to get. Then we've got four vehicles in the police department. And then we've got three-yard loader for the streets, golf course tractor, backhoe, fire department savings for a truck. That's the ladder truck replacement that they want to do in the next eight to 10 years. And then we've got some additional street message boards, fifty thousand dollars. Some cardio equipment for the rec department, twenty-five thousand dollars. SCBA bottles, which are the air bottles that the firemen take with them into fires, twenty-six thousand dollars. If you look at the total capital improvements, it's a lot of money. Right now, it's sitting at eighteen million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And if you go back to page thirty-two where we look at revenues, you'll see that all of that is offset by tax revenue, intergovernmental revenue, and then miscellaneous revenue where we've got in there field house, transfer from other funds to taking out of reserves for certain things and then field house loan proceeds. And I say loan proceeds, we, we're still working on the financing aspects. And I'm hoping to have Kyle up here at the next meeting to talk to council about some of the options on financing it. We're hoping to get a couple of million dollars in grants to offset that cost as well. And so we continue to work towards that goal. Then if you switch over to page thirty, let's see, where are we going to go to now? I want to say thirty-eight debt service, that, that's usually, I'm trying to think. Oh, the debt service on this that, that we're showing here is for the golf carts. And so if you recall, the general fund bought golf carts, threw a loan from the electric fund. And so we're paying the electric fund back for that, and that's our debt service payment for those golf carts.
Brent's so nice. Thanks Brent.
Yeah. And then the golf, if you look at, this has nothing on it. It's because we used to have a separate fund. We covered golf before in the general fund. So if you skip now to page forty-two, we're to the conservation trust. And those are lottery proceeds. Every time somebody buys a lottery ticket in Fort Morgan, they kick a little bit of that back to us for use in outdoor recreation opportunities. And so we've got about a hundred and five thousand dollars in revenue coming in. Then we have some important things that we're going to use with that. If you go to page forty-three, similar to the capital improvement on the far right-hand column, we have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for a park ADA splash pad. And we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted for bathrooms at Optimus and Brenda Joy Park. And then we've got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for the Twaymore Farm multipurpose trail. And Ty's worked really hard to put together a grant application with Colorado Department of Wildlife, Parks and Wildlife. And I think we'll be fairly competitive. Very few of their grants come out this way. Most of them are in the mountains. And we've got a really good master plan to back up what we're doing. So if you recall, two years ago, we spent a lot of money to put together a trails master plan and that's, we're using that now to hopefully leverage, hopefully several hundred thousand dollars in grant money to do some good things out on the trails. The electric department, nothing has changed in the electric department. Well, a few things changed. We adjusted a few line items that seemed to be in error. But overall, all of the things that we have put in there continue to be in there. One thing that we did take out was smart grid system. We had a million and a half in there for smart technology and we have taken that out, at least for now, to balance the budget. Public Works and Engineering on forty-seven, nothing has changed there. Utility billing on page forty-eight, nothing has changed since that was presented. Stores, again, that's our warehouse, Doug Hoffman. And nothing has changed in that since that was presented. We have building maintenance and nothing has changed in that. And the utility director, nothing has changed in the utility director department either. And you go to page fifty-two now, we're at the network budget and nothing has changed in there unless Nelson comes running out of the door screaming, hold on, I wanted to add something else. It's going to stay that way. And that brings us to page fifty-three, which is the bottom line on the electric department, where we will be pulling a little bit, I believe, out of reserve to cover some of the overages in there. But if you look at it, the total revenue is expected to be twenty million two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the expenditure is twenty million two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We have some cap, the money out of reserves is for some of the capital projects that we have in there. Now we go to the water fund. This one is, is really a big one this year because we have a couple of really big projects. We've got the booster station that's going in down by Fort Lepton that we have to put in. And that one's going to be somewhere around three million dollars. So you'll see a substantial increase year over year in this department. But in the water department, nothing has changed since that was presented. And that's the water distribution. And then if you go to page fifty-seven, that's the, the budget for the water treatment side of things. And if you look at the bottom of the total on page fifty-eight, you'll see that there's quite a difference in the total from year to year. Significant amount of money that is going into pay for a couple of things. Again, that three million dollar pump station, but also our Riverside lease, we renewed that. And it went from about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to a million and a half. So there's another million dollars a year that has to go towards water resources that we didn't have before. And then the debt service, which is on page fifty-nine, that's paying off our outstanding loans in the water fund. And then going to page sixty, it's the gas. And it starts out with revenues again. And if you go page sixty-one through sixty-two, nothing has changed since it was presented by Tony. And we've got, again, total, the gas revenue total is four million seven hundred and six thousand and our expenditures are four million five hundred and eighty. So we're actually at the positive a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then in the sewer fund, which is page sixty-three, you see the revenues that we projected there. One thing that would adjust in the revenues in some of these utilities is if we add, as we add more units, more houses, additional businesses, you're going to see additional revenue because we actually are selling more of our services. Sewer department hasn't changed since it was presented. And that was wastewater collection. And then we have the wastewater treatment plant. And they have, nothing has really changed in their budget. They did have kind of a, I wouldn't say, well, they had some equipment break and we're trying to figure out what we've got to do to fix that. And it's, if you, if you go out there on the tour, you go through like the bubbling pond.
Aeration.
The aeration pond, yes. That, the aeration fixtures under there had a blowout. And so we've had to switch basins and we've gone back in there and we're trying to figure out, okay, you know, the piping's twenty-five years old and there's probably some changes we need to make with that. So there may be some adjustments, adjustments depending on what we hear back from the engineer on best way to, to address that. That takes us to sixty-seven, which is the overall wastewater treatment plant budget with the various adjustments. So then debt services on page sixty-eight, we paid off everything in that fund, which is good. And we balanced that budget as well with revenues at two million seven hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and expenditures to match. If you look at sanitation, the sanitation department, one of the things that went up in, in that budget as we were looking at it is we, we moved the purchase of a, of a truck this year into next year. We'll be buying two trucks next year. So you'll see that the capital's a little bit higher, but nothing has changed since the presentation of that budget. And we're at total revenue at one million six hundred and six thousand and total expenditure at one million six hundred and six thousand. So there you go. Fiber network, this is just a depreciation thing that we track. And in a few years, we won't be tracking it anymore. This is the old beam pole development. And once those assets are depreciated, then we won't have that anymore. The current assets are, I think, held under, of the new system are being managed under the electric department. Perpetual care fund, nothing has changed in that since it was presented. Page seventy-four is just the breakout of that. And then self-insurance, this is where we pay for our property and casualty as well as our health insurance. And so you'll see that at the top, we've got transfers for healthcare premiums that are paid by the city, paid by employees, as well as dental. And then we've got property and casualty in there as well. There were some very significant hailstorms last year, the year before last, in, in Wheat Ridge and in the Denver area. And SIRSIA had a bunch of insureds in that area and they've had several claims. So they've given us a heads up that they'll, that the premiums will likely be going up for everybody just because they had a bad year, but they haven't really given us those specific numbers that I'm aware of at this time. But I think, I think we've received the renewals on that. Anyways, the self-insurance expenditures match up with the self expend, self-insurance expenditures on page seventy-seven, at four million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then that takes us to the River View Commons General Improvement District. And this is just a pass-through collection of money on, that we receive from the county on lots that have, still owe money on the outstanding bonds and that gets transferred over. So with that, if you go to page seventy-nine, the bottom lines, you've got net or total revenue, the amount of seventy-eight million two hundred and fifty-nine thousand with a total expenditure in seventy-eight million one hundred and twenty-two thousand with a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and four dollars to the positive with the adjustments. So are there any questions?
Just one on the fiber network. You had depreciation. Where does the lease payment from Allo go into the budget?
It goes into the electric department as a revenue to pay back the, what we, what we spent. Now, if I could just take a minute and talk a little bit about personnel. One of the things that we have been looking at and that has been presented to council are different positions to be considered in next year's budget. We have, we don't have them in this budget right now and partly because the budget looks pretty good, balances out fairly well. But I, I was asked to provide a list of the, the positions that have been added or adjusted this year in the budget. And that should have been attached to your memo, or your budget. So if you look at that, we've put it together by department. And wherever there has been an addition or an adjustment, you can see it there. So for example, in the city clerk office, we had a deputy city clerk, but there was no FTE gain. That was just an adjustment to that position. So if you look at the right-hand column, it'll show you an adjustment in the position, but it'll say whether or not it was an addition of an employee. So overall, we've added this year seven employees and it shows you there where they come from. They added a second paid intern, which is about a part-time FTE. Police additional third records technician, an additional person, added a part-time background investigator, which is a half FTE. Added second SRO, which is a one FTE. And then there was added third corporal and fourth corporal. And then there was, then the fire, added a vehicle service tech this year. City clerk added the deputy city clerk, but that wasn't an addition. And then we added a marketing, well, the fire department wasn't an addition either. They just, someone retired and they hired, it's a different position in there.
So they're just not replacing the retirees' position and putting the part-time.
Yeah.
The full-time now.
And then, anyway, so there, there's the breakdown for what's been done so far this year. The, the second part of what I'm trying to, what we're trying to figure out on, from a staff perspective is overall, we have requests from department managers of eleven and a half additional employees throughout the city. That would include a building permit technician. It would be a finance general accountant. It'd be a full, adjusting a full-time, a part-time to a full-time fire administrative assistant, an inventory control specialist, a library part-time circulation assistant, a cemetery general maintenance worker, a parks general maintenance worker, a police piece, a police peace officer one, a police part-time evidence clerk, a recreation coordinator at the senior, senior center, a streets maintenance worker, a wastewater collection operator, and a water treatment operator. If we added all of those today, we would have to figure out somewhere in the budget where to add about another million dollars for those eleven positions. And that includes, it's not just their salaries, it includes also their benefits and everything that goes along with adding a person. Some of the things that aren't necessarily in here, for example, with the new police officer, if they add another police officer, there's another car. They're about forty, as you saw on the budget, they're about forty-three thousand dollars apiece. So there's additional costs that may not be in that number. So what we've done is we've asked all of the department managers to provide us with additional information. And we're going to go through and probably determine which department needs the, may need a position in this year's budget versus next year, but next year's budget. And we'll talk a little bit about that tomorrow. We've been working on it the last few weeks. But we, we have various things that they've had to respond to as to why this person is important. For example, are there any safety issues? Does this person address a safety issue to make it safer in your department? When was the last person that was added to your department? There was, how would this, are, are you not getting certain things done in your department because this person's not there? Does this enhance the services that you provide to the city in your department? And so they've had to respond and address those various issues. And then we'll go through that and say, okay, where does the need seem to be the most? And then next year, we'll do the same thing. I think it would be very hard to add eleven FTEs after adding some of the employees we did this year. But it's, it's important to note that, you know, we had more employees 10 years ago than we did last year. And so we have cut employees in the past, not filled certain positions. And now we're trying to figure out what the capacity needs are in these various departments. So just wanted to provide you So just wanted to provide you that for information purposes and then ask if there are any questions about the budget or anything that we need to change or add or something we might have missed.
I just have a question because I know, I'm glad to hear that, you know, you're checking on it and everything as far as the requested new employees or new FTEs and everything because I was trying to figure out why it seemed like everybody, it seemed like everybody was asking for an additional employee to their department or their area and everything. And I can understand parks and the cemetery where they can't get the seasonals and everything, that point of kind of grip, but is the workload increasing that much or is the city increased that much or I just couldn't figure out why all of a sudden we're getting all these requests for new employees because I hate to see, you know, government expand or grow needlessly.
No, and I agree and that's one of the things that we discussed that, so to answer your question, I'm not sure exactly why all of the specific requests came in. Obviously, some of them were explained better than others and that's why we're going to go through and kind of ferret it out. But, you know, to the bigger issue that you raise, when you look at hiring on eleven more people, if you have a downturn in the economy in a year or two, then you've got to lay people off and it's not a fun thing to do, to have to downsize an organization to meet your revenues. So we don't want it to be big, we don't want to spend money on employees that aren't needed, obviously, we don't want it to get larger, but also we don't want to put ourselves in a position where it's not sustainable long-term and so that's definitely something that we're looking at.
Well, I agree with that. I mean, I think that you've done a great job of, you know, pretty much of the annual raises and taking care of the employees and working towards employee retention and I just think of the situation that Sterling must have faced, I think it was last year, halfway through the year when all of a sudden they had to cut wages and everything because they realized that their income and their budget wasn't going to be able to support the number of employees they had and so, like you, I'd really hate to see us faced with that type of situation, so.
So we're trying to plan for that as well. So we're not promoting, proposing any additions at this time until we go through this process and kind of figure these things out.
Okay.
Obviously, when we get to the point, there are certain things that I won't have any control over. Obviously, the police department would like to add a new police officer and an evidence clerk in addition to what they've already added this year and I think, you know, that would be one that, that's completely up to the council to decide if you want to add that in and, you know, there will be offsets. Do you add a police officer or do you add somebody in the, in the, in the parks department? And that will be the decision of council.
Can I ask some questions about the police department?
Sure.
And some of their, where does the school district, because it says we added, we had one full FTE with the second SRO. I thought the school district pays fifty percent, so that's not technically a full one, right?
Well, it's a full-time employee in that we're responsible for, I mean, we put it on as our employee, it's not an employee of the school district. So we add it as a FTE, but there is an offset, I believe, of their, their pay from the school district, yes.
Because it's, they, right, we dropped the percentages of the current SRO from sixty percent to fifty, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my recollection.
And then I thought the corporal, the adding the third and fourth corporal, I thought those were simply promotions. I didn't think they were title changes versus an additional officer.
They were just titles.
My understanding is that they, Susan, they.
They what?
They backfill, so after they promoted them, they backfilled those positions. Is that correct? So they moved people to corporal, then they backfilled. They used to have three people on each shift, three to four, I think now they're running four.
You might do some checking because I don't, they just replaced the senior officers in charge by giving them a title of a corporal.
Okay.
So you got maybe a salary increase, yes, but not.
Not a person. Okay, we'll double check that.
And that's definitely something that Paul will need to explain.
Yeah, and we can adjust, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
So that may, that may help your numbers from.
For what we did this year.
What we did.
Yeah. Very good.
So will we get some of that information prior to the finalization of the budget of the one, the employees you're looking at?
Yes. Yeah, we.
What you're doing internally.
Yeah, we, we'll look at it this week before the next meeting, the final presentation and we'll see if, you know, what we believe need to be added. I'll probably reach out to Paul, kind of get his feel on it, let him know where we're coming from, see if we can't work something out. And then, yeah, we'll bring it to you before we, before the first reading, well, at the first reading and then if you decide you want to or not, you can go from there, so.
Okay.
Very good.
And I guess the question.
Sure.
So we had suggested with a couple of departments specifically, the ones that have problems with seasonals.
Yeah.
Is that part of what you're looking at is making sure that, does it make sense instead of having X number of seasonals, how many seasonal positions can you cut and replace it with a full-time? I assume that's part of what we're doing.
Yes.
We can't get them anyway as seasonals.
Well, that's part of what we had looked at is, are we going to take the seasonal funding and put it into an FTE or do we need to keep those seasonals and still have an FTE? So those are some of the things that we're looking at.
Just if you can't get the, if you can't get the seasonal.
Well, it doesn't matter if you've got it in the budget or not, that's true. So, very good. Well, I want to thank all of the managers and the council staff, everybody who's helped put this together. It is a lot of work, but it is what tells us what we need to do throughout the year. So thank you very much.
Next is public comment and audience participation for items not on the agenda.
As all of you know, my name's Marla Stumpf and I'm still running for city council. I just wanted to clarify that on September 20th, I was notified that there was a possible problem with my dual candidacy for both school board and city council. I guess this has maybe never happened before that someone was crazy enough so no one knew about the statute, but we all do now, thanks to a kind citizen. And so I just wanted to let you know that I received an email early that morning and by nine oh two, I had contacted Mr. Brennan and had gone to the school district and the county clerk and had given them all a certified letter that I was suspending or terminating my candidacy for school board. I pulled a timestamp of my sort of registration of each candidacy and I was registered first for city council, so that's how I chose that. So now we're all good, we're all in compliance, the secretary of state and I are like this, so, there we go. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. On this Thursday, October 3rd at 6:00 PM in this room, we'll have the, an additional downtown zoning overlay meeting that was requested at the last city council meeting. And then the next city council regular meeting will be October 15th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Under bids, the city is accepting sealed bids for one hundred and twelve point five and one hundred and fifty KVA pad-mounted transformers until 2:45 PM on October 3rd.
Reports by officials and staff.
Thank you. Lot of things going on at the city, wrapping up construction projects, preparing for next year's construction projects, a lot of economic development things, I kind of report on that, I won't report on those things again, but was there anybody else on staff that had anything that they needed to bring up? All right, well, we're looking forward to the mayor's day off and appreciate that and so thank you very much. We'll let all of the employees know that council has graciously allowed us to do that again this year.
Jeff, thanks for getting on the dumpster thing, that helped me out tremendously.
Oh, good. We're still working on maybe the light pole and some other things, but they're still on the list.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Okay. Next on the agenda is an executive session for discussions of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24 dash six, dash four oh two F and not involving any specific employee who have requested discussion of a person, of a matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official. A personnel policy that did not require the discussion of the matter of personnel to particular employees, the following details are provided for identification purposes. Finalized city manager eval, annual evaluation. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your Honor, I offer a motion to go into executive session.
Second. A motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. We will adjourn to executive session.